Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I'm going to ask Councilman Brad Stipes to lead us tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have one public hearing tonight. Proposed ordinance amendment to chapter forty-two zoning for the town code, Christiansburg Town Code in regards to definitions, conditional zoning setbacks, offsets for two family dwellings and sidewalk requirements. Is there anyone here to address this matter? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, call a regular meeting of the Christiansburg Town Council to order. I would like to amend our agenda for a couple of items tonight. Under the consent agenda, we're going to add the April Child Abuse Prevention Month, the commitment to graduate, and the local government Education Week. We'll do all those under consent. I don't think we have anybody here to represent under the recognition, so we'll just move it to there. The second is, I don't believe the representative from the Eric Sutcliffe Memorial, folk who runs, will be here.
No, sir. They were going to be, but I believe that town's already gotten behind that as we did last year and approved it, so they won't be presenting this evening.
And the third is, under discussion by mayor and council members, item number two, it is Montgomery County Museum to discuss the support of Mountains of Music Homecoming Event. We had the library, but it is, so I would accept a notion.
I assume we've moved to make the amendments as mentioned by Mayor Barber?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The agenda is amended. Under the consent agenda, we have resolution recognizing Christiansburg High School wrestling team, resolution recognizing Christiansburg High School student Ronnie Pomonte, the April Child Abuse Prevention Month, the commitment to graduate of Montgomery County Schools, and the local government Education Week, our minutes and our monthly bills.
Some move that we approve the consent agenda?
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Madam Assistant Clerk, would you? Let me introduce Amber Beasley, who is bench hitting tonight for Michelle. Amber does this on occasion. Welcome back to us.
Thank you very much.
She's in our finance department downstairs, so treat her nice. It's getting close to five. If you'll call the council.
Oh, okay. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Huppert.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Van Huger.
Aye.
And Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
There is no one here tonight to accept any of the resolutions, so we will postpone that until we have a chance to get in touch with the wrestling team and the Pomonti family. So I think Mr. Weber's still traveling back from the national wrestling tournaments, and Pomonti's had another commitment tonight, so we will slide by recognitions. Move to the citizens' hearings. Department report by Planning Director Nicole Hare.
You unplugged it there.
Oh, yeah.
It was working a few minutes ago. That video cord to it. You have to turn the screen on. Side here.
Thank you, Mayor Barber, and members of council, for the opportunity to present on the Planning and Zoning Department. Staff members of the Planning Department are myself, Missy Martin, and Sarah Morgan. We also have interns that will occasionally work with us, and this semester we do have one from Virginia Tech working with us. Today we're going to talk about code enforcement. The Planning Department handles a variety of duties for the town, and code enforcement is a large portion of our duties. The Planning and Zoning Department handles code enforcement on a complaint basis and receives complaints via phone calls, complaint forms, letters, or emails. Staff will also address violations they see while out in town. The primary violations the Planning Department handles include high grass, junk and debris, setback violations, animal issues. During the last twelve months, nearly three hundred of these violations were handled. In handling complaints, the department staff works closely with the Police Department and other departments for enforcement. When staff does find a violation to the town's ordinances, a notice of violation is sent via certified mail. The tenant or property owner is given a set time period to bring the property into compliance. If the tenant or property owner is unable to meet the timeframe, the staff works closely with the property owner or tenant to bring the property into compliance. When compliance is not achieved, or when the property owner or tenant does not work with the staff, staff will proceed to court to enforce the requirements of the ordinances. This is one, this property is one that department has continuous high grass violations. State legislation has allowed municipality to send one violation notice during the growing season to cover all subsequent high grass violations. In this case, to cover, in this case, the property owner received a violation notice last May and was given ten days to mow. Having partially mowed, the town gave the property owner an additional ten days to come to compliance. However, at the end of that time period, the property was not in compliance, and the town did have to hire a private contractor to mow. When properties are contracted for mowing or cleanup, the town passes the cost on to the property owner or tenant. In this case, a second violation was found in September, which this photo is from, and the property was contracted to be mowed again because the original violation notice notified that property owner this would be the case for any future violations in the year. Ms. Morgan and I did speak with the property owner to help him understand the process and to beware, to be aware of the town's requirements. Our hope is this year he will not have violation situations. This junk and debris case was recently resolved with the court's assistance. The junk and debris was visible from the street, but also from the neighbor's backyard where this photo was taken. Staff contacted the tenant and copied the property owner on all correspondence to ensure the property owner was aware of conditions of his property. When compliance was not made, the tenant was subpoenaed to court for the violation. The judge gave the tenant thirty days to comply. If the property was brought into compliance, he was able to dismiss the case. Staff was able to work with the tenant. All materials were removed from the property, and the case was dismissed. Not all cases require for action, though. In this violation case, the property owner took actions to clean the property up within the ten-day period. Department also handles sign violations. When the department notices a sign violation, different actions are taken. In the case of temporary signs such as these, staff will remove the signs and contact the company informing them a permit is required. Staff will relay the requirements for setbacks and other information to ensure the company comes into compliance. When a permanent sign is installed or changed without a sign permit, staff will contact the property owner or the business to obtain a sign permit. There have been cases where compliance was not achieved for permanent signage, and that signs, those signs were removed at the owner's expense. The town, the Planning and Zoning Department does receive complaints of innocable vehicles in view of the street. This is when the partnership with the Police Department is of value. The ordinance officer is able to run the registration and make contact with the owner. The owner then has the option of screening the vehicle from view or remove the vehicle from the property. The zoning becomes more involved when the number of innocable vehicles exceeds four. This would be considered a junkyard and would be a violation to the zoning ordinance. And the department does receive complaints regarding animals. Typical violations regarding animals included agricultural animals in residential districts. This guy was located up in Craig Mountain in the backyard at one point.
I swear I won't do it again.
And also, we hear a lot that same violations involve chickens. While these animals are allowed in the agriculture district, they are not allowed in residential. Staff works closely with the owners to have the animals relocated and removed from the properties. And we also handle setback violations. The Planning and Zoning Department works closely with the Building Department for compliance on setting of storage buildings, carports, and other structures that could be in setback or without permits. Setbacks or setback violations are very common when property owners do not acquire the permits to add structures to their property. In this case, the building was discovered by the Building Department in September. It was turned over to the Planning and Zoning Department because it violates the front setbacks and requires a zoning permit for construction. The property owner was difficult to contact, and a police officer had to serve the violation notice. When the property owner did not contact the town nor apply for a permit, the property owner was subpoenaed to court. This case was heard by the judge yesterday, and the property owner did not appear. The judge did charge the property owner with a penalty of a thousand dollars, nine hundred of which will be suspended if the property is brought into compliance in thirty days. So we'll see if they come in to get a permit or not. I want to thank you for your time this evening and hearing a little bit more about the Planning Department and how we do code enforcement. I'll open it to any questions regarding the department or even code enforcement.
Nicole, I have one question. When you all have to engage the judicial remedies to bring properties into compliance and to bring property owners into compliance as far as what the requirements are, court costs, are they compensable as well?
Yes.
In every case, I guess under the code, that's, the judge will always assess those?
The judge, yes. Yes, sir.
Great.
I have a question. I went from four sixty between here and Blacksburg.
Okay.
Sometimes businesses have sales going on.
Yes.
And I've noticed signs up and down the road, the medium and so forth.
Especially on the weekends. And so we contact those businesses on Monday morning. There have been instances on the weekend where Ms. Martin actually noticed on a, I believe a Sunday afternoon out there where the Best Buy Shop Center, a flagger was actually out in the intersection, and she contacted the Police Department when she witnessed that. So if something like that, where it's a danger and things like that, we'll contact and take care of it immediately. Or stopping in on a business. I've stopped in on a business on a weekend and had them pull their signs, so.
All right, thank you.
You know, going back just a few years ago, we started enforcing a requirement that disabled vehicles, like one sitting in front beside a house, could sit there if it was covered with the correct type of coverage. How's that working?
It's working out really well. Some of them will blow off, and we get a call about it almost immediately, and we'll send the ordinance officer out, and he'll, he'll like contact and have it covered immediately. So those are pretty good. The ones we deal with typically, you'll get multiples, four, five, six. We have one right now that's twelve.
What's the situation with the one residence out on Stafford Drive that has everything that you can think of there?
His grandfather, the way he is.
Is he?
He had those items when he was, when that property was annexed into town. So we monitor it. We get complaints when he has, he has birds on the property, and when they get loose, the guineas get loose, we get phone calls. And Ms. Morgan has visited the property with police officers to ensure that the birds are in their cages and.
Nicole, that was a fantastic presentation, and I really applaud you and also Barry for, this is great, this is great. You mentioned approximately three hundred in a year. Of those three hundred, how many would you say have a successful conclusion without, you know, as Mr. Hall says, judicial remedy?
Ninety-five percent of the time. It's not very often that we're in court. Here lately it's been a little bit more, just because these folks are not coming to compliance, and they're not making contact with us. If they're making contact with us, and say somebody can't get a building moved or can't apply for a variance to the building, we're willing to work with them as long as we can have them tell us what their timeframe is. You know, when can they make, pay the fees or, you know, clean up a property? Some of these properties are very difficult to clean up, and we'll give them ten, twenty, thirty days to get it all cleaned up. So we, so the towns are incurring the cost to contract it out or take anybody to court.
And the question is, do we, do we have a police officer that's strictly enforcement and zoning, or?
Our ordinance officer has, wears multiple hats. He's also, he's a dare officer also, and at times he's pulled on the road.
Who is that?
Officer Marshall.
Okay. So, yeah, we do have, but he wears different hats.
And Sergeant Tamley's also assistant, assisted us on quite a few of these.
Wonderful presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Yard sale signs. How do we deal with those babies?
Yard sale signs. You're allowed two yard sales a year, so, Missy tears them down, I'll be honest, we tear them down. They're not allowed on utility poles. If they're, you know, and we, they leave them up. And so we'll take them either on, if we happen to notice one blow up on Friday, we'll take them, or we'll wait until I'm taking them down on Monday, but folks forget to tear them down, and we try to be a little more lenient, we understand, but they need to be removed, and they cannot be put on our utility poles. Public Works is usually really good to help us with that, especially during the summer when they're out maintaining these medians and things, and they see them pop up, and so we take them down.
They can have two yard sales per year without a permit?
Yep. They don't require permitting at all for yard sales.
Okay.
Going back to the mowing the lawn at the beginning of your presentation. All right, so you had to have a private company go and mow it?
Correct.
Two times, is that correct?
Correct.
And the fellows still would not pay for it, is that correct?
I'm not sure if he's paid for it. I don't think he has. Finance takes over. Once we have closed out and complied the property for mowing, we will turn the contract over to, turn the invoice over to the, it's Finance Department, so whoever's mowed it can get paid. And then in turn, the Finance Department then will send invoices and statements to the property owner to get it into compliance.
Do we use DMV stops on them?
I don't know that we can.
Put liens on the property?
We can lien the property for it.
Lien on the property.
Yeah. And so, but some of these are only a few hundred dollars, so we'll just hold that way and see.
It seems to me that you are willing to work with anybody that's willing to work with you.
Correct.
And it's almost like just a willful non-compliance before you even have to take that next step.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. We would rather work with the citizens and help them get through the process.
I'd like to say something on that note. Actually, I have a neighbor of mine in my neighborhood had a temporary carport up, which another couple of neighbors sort of decided they didn't like. And this gentleman, he's an elderly gentleman, and he was in and out of the hospital. He had Alzheimer's real bad. Fortunately, he lost his life just recently, and of course, it was removed, but the town, you know, given the situation, he had no family members, his son had passed away, his wife was in a home, we couldn't help. But I just appreciate what you and your staff, and especially the town staff, did by just not being so forceful to go in and say, get it out of here. And I appreciate that, and a lot of, a lot of his neighbors and my neighbors appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. If you want to get the lights while you go back that way.
Yes, sir.
This is our citizens' hearing, citizens' comments portion of the citizens' hearing meeting. If you have an item that you would like to address council and the mayor on, this is your time to do it. Please come forward to the podium, give us your name, your address, and if you would address your comments to the chair. Is there anyone here to address council? Seeing no one, I'll close the citizens' hearing portion of it. We're now into discussion by mayor and council members. Appointment of Planning Commission members to fill vacancies.
Mr. Mayor, respectfully, I would move that we appoint three individuals to fill the current vacancies on the Planning Commission, and in no particular order, they would be Mrs. Jenny Peoples, Mrs. Tacey Newell, and Mr. Hill Johnson.
I'll second. Madam Clerk, may you poll council on that?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop. Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Huppert.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Van Huger.
Aye.
And Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
We have to be six oh. Mr. Johnson and Mrs. Newell are here tonight, and let me say, we had an interview process, and we, I think I can speak for council. We were very pleased with the applications that came forward. There is a wealth of knowledge in several areas that we're going to be adding to the board, to the Planning Commission. We look forward to working with you all, and you certainly are under good leadership with Nicole and her group here. So, again, welcome to the Planning Commission, and I will get a letter out to you shortly acknowledging so. Thank you very much. The Montgomery County Museum, we wanted to discuss the amount and the possibilities of support for the Mountains of Music Homecoming Event. As you remember, Ms. Sue was here last week and gave us a very enthusiastic presentation about their expectations, and I would hope that we can enter into a partnership to help sponsor this thing in the term of about three thousand dollars plus. They have a permit for services that they have, that has gone through, and I'm assured that that would not exceed two thousand dollars, probably somewhere around fifteen hundred in town time and efforts. And I think they are, they are moving, they being the museum and their board are moving in the right direction. I think this event can be a big event, will bring a lot of people into town. I checked with Mrs. Tweedy last, earlier, I guess it was last week. There is funding available through tourism to cover both of those. There's also funding for the first half of the farmer's market in this year's funding, and we will be replenishing that fund sometime in July, June, July, is that correct? July, August, something. From the tourism monies, the, whatever the percentage is, one percent, fifteen percent?
Fifteen percent of one percent.
How many? Fifteen percent of one percent of the, is that lodging tax?
Yes.
Okay. So I would hope that council would agree that this is the right thing to do for this, for the museum, to help them get their project on the way.
Would this require us to have a vote, Mr. Mayor?
Probably so.
Or just a approval? Because it is.
Well, I mean, it can be a, we don't have to have a full call roll vote, but if you're, I can pull a vote if you're in favor of doing this.
I mean, I wouldn't have any problem make, I think out of the tourism budget, it makes perfect sense, especially the way they're marketing the program. And I mean, I'd make a motion that we move to approve, I just, I hate to use the word, a term that's a particular figure, maybe a little bit more than that, maybe a little bit less than that, but I'd be fine with approving the, I don't know if you want to call it stip, or we even call it, but monies to be used in the tourism budget to support the Mountains of Music Homecoming Event, put on and hosted by the Montgomery County Museum. And I guess I'd make in the form of a motion and approve up to three thousand dollars that can be used in that regard.
Up to five, actually, because we're going to, part of that, the grant for town services comes out of tourism, I believe.
Correct. They have to have a special event permit, because that way we could be able to coordinate with the Police Department, Parks and Rec, and Public Works for new services, and we need council support to move that application forward, because it needs to be a town sanctioned event or town sponsored event.
Let me withdraw that motion, and I'll make a motion that the town council support the Montgomery County Museum's efforts in regards to putting on the Mountain Music Homecoming Event in the amount up to and including five thousand dollars of support from the tourism budget.
I would second that.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
This is going to be like an annual event, is that correct, if they're looking at that way?
Well, the Crooked Road, this is part of the Crooked Road thing, and it is, you know, it's been two years in a row, so as long as the Crooked Road is up, they might want to do it again.
It's not going anywhere.
This year will be, the first time they've really held this event.
Yep.
It's a nine-day event. There's some fifty venues traveling basically along Route 58, but it does vary off of it. And one of the venues is going to be the Art Center of the University also.
Mass Art Center. And then Christiansburg High School.
And the High School.
And the High School. So there's going to be three of them in Christiansburg. So this thing has potential to grow to be phenomenal.
Last year was just Montgomery County, the event that was in June.
Right.
And this time it's all the way from Abington, full length of Crooked Road.
I think they even have some events, I knew they had some events last year down in the Shawsville area. So it's kind of a countywide, I don't, I don't know whether the Riner section is involved in it or not.
Not this year.
This whole thing is new out of the Crooked Road, though. It's coordinated by Jack Hinchellwood's group down in Bristol, and this will be the first time it's really been held, and it's going to be, like I said, phenomenal, with about fifty different venues over the length, so. And they, the, actually, the Crooked Road is coordinating the dates so that they don't have conflicts as people crowd.
Right.
I think it's a worthwhile event, and I will encourage council members to come and take part in the event. I think there's a five-dollar admission charge to it, but there's supposed to be some pretty good, some pretty good things going on there.
Any idea when the, when the venues for the Christiansburg will be?
I haven't heard for the High School. I know this one is June the thirteenth, so I would assume the High School would be somewhere within that nine-day period.
It's going to be that night.
Or that night. So this is going to be from eleven to?
This is going to be eleven to six, and the High School's going to be from seven to whatever. And then the library will also have a thing.
Okay. All right.
The library will have a thing that Friday, that Friday evening, so it's going to be a big weekend, really, for the Crooked Road here in Christiansburg.
This is perfect use of tourism budget, in my opinion.
I think so, too. It's perfect. And we also put that on our website, then?
Yes.
Make sure to get that, maybe even part of the splash page when it gets, if it.
And the Riner bills.
And even, yeah, the utility bills.
Just a little blip in the newsletter.
I mean, if we're getting behind it like this, we might as well go.
Scoop, anything you want to do to help us on that promoting, of course, you know you.
You know, I think they've got something like five bands set up from eleven to six at night, and I forgot the name of the big band. Walton Bound or something of that nature.
Yeah.
Yeah, who would really, they really think that people are going to come from out of town and from Roanoke and, you know, Woodville to hear these different groups, and going to have it right there on the lawn, and have several vendors.
Got a couple of food trucks coming in, I believe.
Food trucks coming in.
Did we do anything on the, with tourism? And I'm not saying we go out and buy the flags or anything, but do we have anything like that that goes up for these types? If this is going to be something like a yearly, it's not a yearly event yet, but if it becomes a yearly event?
That would be likely.
Because I just noticed like when I go to Floyd, they've got the Crooked, of course, you have a lot of, it's a unique little venue up there anyway, but, and even that in Abington as well. Of course, Abington gets behind a lot of things, but not trying to put cart before the horse here, but if this becomes an annual event, it'd be nice for us to look at something like that, if it's set aside for a particular timeframe during the month of June.
The museum flags that we got in.
Yeah, the banner flags go up on the streets.
Go very well.
And you know, I think that if they, and I'm not sure if they have made arrangements for any type of banner or sign or anything, I'll try to get with Sue and see. I think this is a good step.
I'm pretty sure they have.
I think, I think so. They've been working on this.
You're working with Sheila.
Sheila, that's correct. Okay. All right, so I have a motion in a second. All those in favor of five, up to five thousand, including five thousand dollars to the museum, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. Number six oh. Town council reports. Mr. Huppert.
Well, I would like to say something unusual and say something nice about Mr. Showalter.
We got it on film now, didn't we?
I'm really not going to say.
I'm going to play this for all my friends.
I'm not really saying anything nice about him. I really am saying something nice about his wife, and.
That's a little lazy.
Watch yourself.
I'm watching, okay. Now, I'm not sure if some of you on this side have seen, if you know, the mayor, two meetings ago proposed that we buy an ad in the Montgomery Chamber Magazine, okay, that we, and he gave several reasons, and we agreed it, and then we, Henry volunteered to volunteer his wife, which is of course very nice of him. And he has a copy of that right here, and Mr. Stipes and I have looked it over, and I think it's one of the best ads that we put out. It really, really says something and really says something about Christiansburg, and so I congratulate, you know, Mr. Showalter and his, and his wife for doing this. And if you guys have not seen it, maybe at the meeting, come over here and take a look at it. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
I'll just stack on a little bit of that. Mike, Becky, Allison, all participated in this. Me, not so much, so she did a great job, thanks for that.
She, she really did. It's, it's very well prepared. It will stand out well. Stipes?
A simple statement. Apologize for missing the last meeting. Lifelong family friend died unexpectedly in Raleigh, and I was, traveled there for that, this very evening. And only. And only comment I have is to welcome the new planning commissioners aboard, and if it means anything, probably won't, but going into this process, before we received applications and held interviews, I was determined that we would just have, or I was of the mindset that all we needed was one person. And having the quality of application and interviews and so forth, I'm happy to support three and welcome you aboard, and we've got, we've had, I was on the planning commission for seven years and don't print in the paper, but it was more of a rubber stamp, a commission at that time, and we have a very strong planning commission now, and the people we've selected make our job very easy at this table, and I welcome you aboard and appreciate your willingness to serve.
Mr. Jim Vee?
I likewise would like to welcome the new members of the planning commission and look forward to working with you folks and the recommendations you bring forward to us. And that's about it, nothing else today.
Mr. Hall?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, I want to thank council, I thank Mr. Helms and his staff for the, I think the importance you all place on child abuse prevention, something very near and dear, and I think that we, under the mayor's leadership and Mr. Helms' leadership, have led the way, I think, over the last year as far as getting other localities on board with this, and it's very, very important, and I think as leaders you all have exemplified how important it is by your actions. Currently, under, with child abuse prevention being recognized in the month of April nationally, it's more of a national understanding, but, and it's kind of brought down to localities. Right now, on April 2nd of this year, at Pulaski County Courthouse, we're doing the speech by an individual out of Richmond, who's coming in to speak and there's a little reception afterwards, that's from 6 to 7 p.m., and that's been, I think it's the fourth year we've done it in Pulaski, but for the first time, we're gonna be doing it in Montgomery County Courthouse this year, it's in Stone, it's on April 23rd of this year from 6 to 7, we're gonna have the Honorable Judge Kim O'Donnell, and just, I like Kim O'Donnell so much, I have such a great respect for her, she was an inner-city Richmond judge for 30 years, and she's seen it all when it comes to trauma on children, and I can imagine the things she can speak of, but just in my personal experiences with her, I guess with the court, she's amazing when it comes to dealing with children that come through the court system that are involved in child abuse or foster care, her ability to take the robe off without actually doing it and really invite those kids in is something to really, it's amazing. So, I've had a number of kids that I've dealt with, she just makes it, just breaks it down for them, so she's fantastic, she'll be speaking over here on the 23rd. In addition, the, we have the four speakers lined up, I think I sent an email out, we've got members of the CAC, which has a member of the Police Department, I think Ricky Bond and Melissa Almond from Rutherford City Department of Social Services will be here in April, we'll have an individual from Child Abuse Services from Pulaski here in April, we'll have an individual from ongoing foster care, foster care supervisor from Montgomery County DSS in April, and we're gonna have Bev Walters from NRVCS, I'm sorry, NRV Cares coming in April as well, and I think most of you know that Walters is retiring, she is an asset and has been for some time, but she'll be stepping down, I think, this year, so she'll be here, I think, the last meeting of April, I've got all that broken down, Mr. Helms, and I'll pass it along to you. Finally, the Kiwanis lease, we sent out the, I think the information to you all, I think it was four modifications we suggested, I've spoken with the mayor about that, nothing major, nothing unexpected, I don't believe, but if there's any questions you all have, go free to email me or call me, but I think that's already been sent on to the Kiwanis Club, and with that, I think that's all I have. Thank you all again, though, for Child Abuse Prevention Month and getting behind that.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes, on March 28th, Christiansburg Rescue Squad will be holding a blood drive, it'll be from 10 to 2 at the Rescue Squad building, and it's March 28th.
I only have a couple of things, one, just, Mr. Hall told you, we have forwarded the modifications to the lease to the Kiwanis Club, I think their committee will be meeting soon, and hopefully we can put this baby to bed, get it all over with, get it all done. And secondly, for council members, I have been appointed to a committee through VML to help plan the next VML conference in October in Richmond, so if you have any thoughts, anything that you'd like to see us do or a different style presentation, shoot me an email and so I can have some ideas on, I'm going to Richmond April the 17th for the first meeting and the rest of them will be phone conference meetings, but...
So, there's something we, we'd like to see, we have a presentation on, we can send that to you?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's kind of the stuff we're there for.
Work session, home table thing?
Right, that'd be great.
So, anything that you want to send him, just keep in mind the 17th, and I'll, I'll send an email out, we've got about a month or so, but I'll send an email out reminding you all, I was, we're pleased to be selected on this committee, so we'll see what we do. That's pretty much it, town managers reports.
Okay. Couple of public hearings to set for different dates, well, in a few minutes you get the draft budget, and in that, we're recommending an increase in water and sewer fees, I'd like to set the public hearing for water and sewer fee rate increases for the 28th of April, which is a month, a month from now. And the second one is a condition use permit request by Bill Massey, agent for Starlight Mobile Home Park for a single-family residence on Starlight Drive in the B3 General Business District, and I'd like to set that one for the 12th of May.
So, nothing able, is that it?
That's it.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor of setting these two public hearings, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, sign, set them up.
Have several work sessions I'd like to try and schedule, one, the first one for a budget, I don't know when y'all like to have that.
The only day that I can't, we just, we set a hearing in April in the evening and then to the night on April 21st, which is the Tuesday, I believe, the third Tuesday of April, it's the only day that I have, it's bad, any other times I would defer to you all.
I'd like to say this way, ahead and set it at a council meeting night, and maybe allow an hour and a half or something like that, and whichever one is convenient for you folks, Barry.
I'd say the earlier the better.
I have no point in letting the first meeting in April, if that works for everyone else.
Mr. Bishop, are you able to make it, like at 5:30?
5:30 meeting?
I would make it.
Okay. I know you come...
Do you want to do it earlier than that, Mr. Helms? I mean, I mean, earlier than the day, but I mean, before April 14.
We have five Tuesdays this month, so next Tuesday is sort of an off night for Tuesday night meetings.
I could do it next Tuesday. You want, I mean, I prefer, if we're not gonna have it before council meeting, then Tuesdays are good because I...
Let me go down a list of work sessions that has been mentioned in the past couple weeks, and then we'll go back to us, so, one's work session on budget, second one's a work session on stormwater fees, and that will take about 90 minutes, and stormwater fees were proposed last year and they're in the budget again this year, we'll also get familiar with that, so we can know, we'll know what direction to proceed. Talked about aquatic, free passes for the aquatic center, and stricter enforcement of building codes and site construction is the third work session that you wanted to schedule, so that's the three I'll try to schedule.
So, you said that we're gonna need at least an hour and a half on both, on the first two?
No, stormwater fees will be an hour and a half.
What if we did that one on the 14th, from 5:30 to 6:45, can we do it an hour and 15 minutes?
Probably.
And that way, I just figured the budget y'all might want to do earlier.
Yeah, let's put the same with me, if you want to do it next week.
All right, so the suggestion is that we meet next Tuesday at, do you want to go at 5:30 or since it's an off night?
Let's make it convenient for Sam, it makes it a little later.
Can you be here at 5:30?
Yeah, yes.
All right, so let's go 5:30 and that way we won't have to, since there's not a council meeting, then we'll be able, if it runs a little longer than the hour and a half, then we'll at least be able to get completed without having to rush through the end of it.
So, that's April 1?
31st.
31st.
On the 31st?
And is that gonna be the budget, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, the budget. We do the, if I'm hearing correctly, the water sewer thing on the, do you want to do it on the 12th before the council meeting?
14.
14, whatever, whatever it is.
14.
Stormwater.
That's the stormwater fees?
Stormwater fee and then the aquatic thing and all, do you want to, is that gonna be a 90-minute deal?
Hopefully not. That's y'all's discussions.
Three hours?
Yeah.
I'm open, guys, I mean, we could do...
So, you want to do it on the 14th at 5:30 and then on the 28th at 5:30?
Yeah, that's fine, so we'll do the aquatic and the others on the 28th at 5:30, is that agreeable with everyone?
That was the second part of that one?
Stricter enforcement, building and building codes and site construction.
I don't think we need motions on those, do we? I'll take them if you want, okay.
How so, where?
Yeah, I think probably do.
So, yeah, let's just set them, so we have a motion to, for the setting public hearings on the 31st, the 12th, oh, 14th, I'm sorry, and the 28th.
5:30.
5:30. So, move.
Those are not public hearings, those are work sessions.
Work sessions, my bad, all right, but the motion, I think clearly said work session. Yeah, okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Anything else?
You asked me for a list of companies that can do a business plan for, update the business plan for the aquatic center, have two so far, one is Richard Daughtry, who works at the Virginia Tech Research Center Accelerator, and the other one is a company called Pros Consulting, they're out of Indianapolis, Indiana, they'll be the company that's working on the one for Wilson property, along with the consultant that's doing the master plan. So, have a meeting with Mr. Daughtry next week to talk about scope and get a price from him, that's the two I came up with so far.
And obviously, the second one's been impressive to you all thus far, correct?
Well, they're on a team, an overall team was impressive, yes, and they came highly recommended, the team leader said, even if you don't pick us, you might want to look at them for that business plan for the aquatic center, that's what they specialize in.
It would make sense, assuming we can fit it into that, you know, the cost into it since they're already gonna be, one part of the recreational side of it.
It'll be, that'll be an additional fee, we didn't work on that for that, but sure.
Okay.
So, by next meeting, we'll know cost by, cost?
I can get a cost from them also, yes.
I'm equally interested, probably more so than the cost, in the qualifications. Do you get, did you, yeah, I mean, I'd like to know that they did this much before. Did you get statement, did you, did you request statement of qualifications?
I will, I have not.
And if council's gonna decide on that, I would like for us to be able to see, not that we will make a decision who to pick, that would be you, but I'd like to see if there's a recommendation or however you do it, I'd like to see what they've done before to see, decide if it's worth the money, the street cred, so to speak, for that.
And as far as their involvement with the Wilson, will they be undertaking the business plan through the Truman Wilson property as well?
They will be doing that one, just...
Correct.
Okay. But those all sound good, good to us, good to me.
And along that same line, we did select Gay and Neil to be the lead on the Wilson property design, they're using four other consultants, Pros is one of them, and our web, Papas and Rudy, ECS for soil and geological testing and recommendations, and told Mr. Stipes, I mentioned the other company to you today, and I can't...
Yeah, Barry looked, yeah.
Transportation.
Googled them and they're out of Hilton Head, South Carolina.
Oh, yeah, that's...
And...
And there's one more, there's a transportation one.
Say again?
There's another, there's a transportation company that you were familiar with.
Paul Ramey Kemp.
Ramey Kemp, so it's...
The one I was interested in was the one that you had, that's not a lot of the park planning.
Yeah, that's their primary thing, is park planning.
And they, and they have been selected now?
Yes.
So, you're, you're willing to go down and negotiate with Jim?
Took soccer teams to play and they have very nice parks there.
These all sound reasonable.
Kevin, for the Planning District Commission.
Kevin Byrd.
Byrd, I sent an email and wanted to remind everybody that the Planning District Commission will be holding their annual dinner on May the 13th at 6 p.m. at the Floyd Hotel, and the event will be structured around food truck rodeo, concept with local beer and wine, it should be a very unique experience in a casual atmosphere. Food trucks will open at 6, have a quick awards program at 7:30 and hopefully finish by 8, so just want to remind everybody to block your calendar out for that.
So, what's the cost of attending then?
He did put that in there. I'll find out.
Can we get that date one more time, Mr. James?
It's the 13th of May, pretty sure it's a Friday.
Thank you.
Love to talk.
No, it's a Wednesday.
That's what I was thinking, it was a Wednesday.
Yeah.
Okay. You'll remind us, or Tracy, Tracy Sumay will remind us, maybe, okay.
That's all I have, sir.
Very good, anything else we need to talk about tonight, Mrs. Tweedy?
Oh, yeah, I did have one other thing. Thank you.
I was tempted to slam a gavel down.
I just carried these up for no reason at all, you know.
Mike, well, she's handing that out, I didn't realize, Miss Peebles wasn't here, if you could reach out, does that sir stop by next meeting? Appreciate it.
A little lottery.
The letters at the beginning hit all the high spots.
This is mainly tonight is just to give to us to review?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not, I don't think we're gonna enter into a whole lot of discussion on it tonight, but at least you have it in your hands and, oh, yeah, we have David Vanusich will be at our next meeting, his appointment to planning, planning commission is, actually ran out the end of, or in February, so we're gonna go ahead and reappoint him, we've contacted him, he is interested in serving again, has done a nice job, very nice job. Okay. I think, I'll expect you all to have this memorized in time for our work sessions, but we're gonna just wait that night out for questions, is that the better thing?
If anybody has any questions, we'll be glad to answer them.
If you, if, in reviewing this, if you have a question about the budget prior to our work session, if you would send it as a copy to town council, so we'll all see, and if you got a question for Val or Barry about something, if you'd copy us, that way we'll, we won't ask, may not ask the same question six times, so, if you, if you don't mind doing that, I'll get that one, can all of us kind of follow along with it?
We might not get back with you to that work session night, but...
At least we'll have a list of the questions that we're gonna ask.
Okay.
Depending on how complicated the question is.
All right. Can I ask if, Jim is the chair, are you gonna make any comments on the budget or not?
Well, I wasn't planning on it, but we've had some, what I felt like was some pretty good work sessions, we don't have a great, and unless there's a surprise in here, you will see it is a proposed balanced budget. And as mentioned in the first few pages, it shows you the criteria of some of the changes that are proposed that would support this budget, and I recommend you go through it and take a look at it. This is...